Do we just proceed?
Do we have approval?
We have four. Do we need five for minutes?
No.
Okay, so we have four. Alright, we'll jump over to September minutes. Alright.
Anybody wish to make a motion?
No, hold on, so it's different people. So for this, the voting members are Yelitchechko, Chris Delatella, Bob Cardica, John Petrolino, Jeff Crum.
Chris Delatella will make a motion for the September minutes to be accepted.
Do we have a second?
Petrolino's second.
Thank you.
Okay, second, okay. Yelitchechko?
Yes.
Chris Delatella?
Yes.
Bob Cardica?
Yes.
John Petrolino?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
Yes. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have a number of resolutions for memorialization. The first resolution is the Francis E. Parker Memorial Home. This is located at 501 Eastern Avenue, Block 437, Lot 8.01, and this was application PB-2020-08.
Alright, same group who voted on the September minutes can vote on this one.
Bob Cardica motion to approve.
Thank you.
Chris Delatella's second.
Alright. Yelitchechko?
Yes.
Chris Delatella?
Yes.
Diana Lopez? Oh wait, sorry. Bob Cardica?
Yes.
John Petrolino?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
Yes.
Alright.
Our resolution is Gloria &amp; Sons LLC. This property is located at 143 Remsen Avenue, Block 198, Lot 7 and 8. This is application PB-2020-02.
So this is same group but not Yelitchechko.
Dan, what meeting was this application heard at?
This was all at the September meeting.
Petrolino make a motion.
Okay. Thank you, John.
You have a second?
Chris Delatella's second.
Thank you, Chris. Chris Delatella?
Yes.
John Petrolino?
Yes.
Jeff Crum. I believe that this is the one that Bob couldn't hear the application, so you declined to vote on this one, Bob. Do I remember that correctly?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, alright.
Dan, how many people voted on that one?
Three.
Is that sufficient?
Yeah, I think that for resolutions, I think even if it was just one and it was a yes, I think it's good. Marvin, you don't need a quorum for resolutions, right?
All you need is just one member that was there.
Great, thank you. Alright, finally, our last resolution is 30 Van Dyke Urban Renewal LLC, located at 30 and 40 Van Dyke Avenue, Block 596.01, Lot 16.03. This was application PB-2020-04.
Okay, so for this one, we have the same group but including Bob Cardica and Yelitchechko.
Chris Delatella will make a motion.
Thank you, Chris.
Yelitchechko's second.
Thank you, Yelitche. Yelitchechko?
Yes.
Chris Delatella?
Yes.
Bob Cardica?
Yes.
Petrolino?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
Yes.
Alright, that's a lot of resolutions.
There was. There's a lot. Great. Moving on to agenda item number six. This is a discussion item. There are proposed changes to the board rules regarding public comment and interaction.
Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Marvin Itzel, may I suggest that we move that to enter the amendment, Title 16 Land Development Code, which is Item 7B?
No objection. That's fine. That will definitely help facilitate good order for this meeting. We don't need a vote, do we?
The Chairman.
Okay, great. We'll move that to the end of the agenda. We're now going to move into public hearings. We have one public hearing, one application tonight, and then one other hearing. Tonight's application is 760 New Brunswick Urban Renewal Limited Liability Company, with a property address of 780 Jersey Avenue. This is Block 598, Lots 2 and 3.06. This is application PB-2020-05. The applicant is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval with bulk variances to construct a new 39,500 square foot facility, a warehouse distribution facility. This is zoning district I-2, and I'm going to turn this over to the applicant's attorney, Mr. Kelso.
Mr. Chairman, Marvin Itzel again. If we could just inquire of the board members if any believe that they may have reason to recuse themselves of a conflict, we can go through that.
Of course. Do any board members at this time, if they have a conflict, they need to recuse themselves from this application? Hearing none? I think we're clear, Mr. Itzel?
Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll hand it over to Mr. Kelso.
Yes, members of the board, Thomas F. Kelso, on behalf of the applicant, 760 New Brunswick Urban Renewal LLC. As the chairman just introduced, this application is for preliminary and final site plan approval, together with several bulk variances, in order to permit my client to construct a 39,500 square foot warehouse that includes cave parking and loading docks. There's also an approximately 900 square foot portion of the building to be used for office space. The property is located at 780 Jersey Avenue, designated as Block 598, Lots 3.06 and Lot 2 on the tax map, and it is in the I-2 General Industrial Zoning District, wherein the use is permitted. We are seeking several bulk variances. I would point out that there is a third variance, a lot width variance of 175 feet, whereas a minimum of 200 feet is required. But this particular bulk variance was approved previously in minor subdivision application and is in existing condition as a result. So the board already should know that that's an approved variance condition. However, we're also seeking variances related to side yards. First, a combined side yard setback of 15.34 feet, whereas a minimum of 50 is required. And then lastly, a side yard setback of 10.34 feet on the north side and 5 feet on the south side, whereas a minimum of 25 feet is required. It's my intent to provide four witnesses for you this evening. First, Mr. Robert Paulus, who is the principal of Wick Properties, who had previously testified a number of times before this board and even at the last hearing, and Wick Properties is the parent company for the applicant 760 New Brunswick Urban Renewal LLC. I would also be calling Mr. Les Walker from Meridian Engineering for professional engineering testimony. Again, Les also testified at the last hearing. Mr. Jim DiBarbieri, licensed professional architect of New Jersey. And finally, Ms. Kate Keller, our principal planner, who also provided testimony at the last hearing. That is a general overview of our application and our witnesses. And unless there's any questions for me, I would call Mr. Robert Paulus for testimony as the first witness. And I would point out that he would need to be on video, and I know that he is prepared to do that. So I would remind Bob if you could put your video on and unmute yourself.
I believe I'm on video now and unmuted.
Yes, you are, Bob.
Thank you.
Mr. Paulus, I'm going to swear you in if that's alright. Can you please state your name, spell your name for the record?
Robert G. Paulus, P-A-U-L-U-S.
Does your policy swear from tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Paulus, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, board members and the public. The subject property is located at Route 91, also known as 780 and 786 Jersey Avenue, of course, in New Brunswick. The applicant plans to construct a 39,500 square foot warehouse distribution facility, and it will feature 36-foot clear ceiling heights, LED lighting, five trailer loading doors, one drive-in door, and 900 square feet of office area. The building will be leased for warehousing and distribution. Manufacturing is not preferred or proposed. The applicant's engineer and architect will elaborate in detail on the site layout and the building design. The site plan design and the layout of the proposed 39,500 square foot warehouse are part of an overall development plan for the original mother lot, which consisted of 30.2 acres, which is now comprised of three lots, 750, 760, and the subject property tonight, 780 Jersey Avenue, being lots 3.04, 3.05, and 3.06, all in Block 598. The adjoining properties at 750, 760, and 986 Jersey Avenue are under common ownership. 750 Jersey Avenue is a 51,500 square foot warehouse, which is presently under construction. 760 Jersey Avenue is Occidental East Coast Calcium Chloride, which is ice melter distribution center, with rail service on 20 acres, 100,000 square foot building, with 16 acres of outdoor storage for 1 million 50-pound bags of ice melter. 986 Jersey Avenue is a 72,000 square foot transfer station also with rail service. All the properties were part of a minor subdivision plan that was approved August 11, 2015, and reapproved in December 18, 2019, creating the three different lots. The proposed 39,500 square foot warehouse building was factored in as part of the infrastructure that has already been built along Jersey Avenue. Storm drainage, sanitary sewer, water, gas, electric, telephone, all about the property. The site plan at 780 Jersey Avenue is keeping, in keeping with the applicant and our company's overall development plan in relationship to 750, 760, and recently completed 986 Jersey Avenue projects. Improvements to Route 91 consisting of drainage, power pole relocations, road widening, curbing, new paving, detention basins, all across the frontage of the project, starting at the Brookside Deli, if everybody knows that, all the way up to 986 Jersey Avenue. They were all completed and across the front of 780 Jersey Avenue, the tonight's application. There is a need for industrial warehouse buildings of this quality, as indicated, quite frankly, by the low vacancy rates at our comparable buildings and other industrial centers we own in New Brunswick. We're presently at 100% in those locations. In addition to the new construction jobs, which will be created when the site is developed, the facility will also bring in permanent jobs to New Brunswick, along with the real estate tax revenues to be anticipated. The building will have a $7 million valuation upon completion. Tonight, we'll be providing testimony and an overview of the application for the warehouse, which will sit on 2.649 acres. We would like to bring to the attention of the board the colored site rendering, the site picture, and the aerial photograph, all shown on Exhibits A1 through A5 for reference point. The applicant is purchasing Lot 2, which is also known as 786 Jersey Avenue, from Public Service, and we have previously provided the board authorization from Public Service to prosecute this application. The demolition of the former Public Service Electric and Gas Substation on Lot 2 is nearly completed already, and you can see that in Exhibits A2, I'm sorry, A3, A4, and A5. The substation is being replaced by a new substation outside of New Brunswick in North Brunswick. As part of the decommissioning of the Jersey Avenue Substation, the electric pole line and easement, 17-foot easement along our westerly property line of 780 Jersey Avenue is being extinguished, and actually, the poles have already been removed. On March 1 of 2019, the LSRP for this site, overall site, the all three parcels, while he con the PE, issued a response action outcome for lots 3.04, 3.05, and 3.06 in Block 598, issuing the response action outcome for the remediation of soils and all the areas of concern as listed in that report. The response action outcome was previously provided to this board as part of our application. Public Service is presently in the process of doing remediation of areas of concern on their Lot 2 in Block 598, and under our purchase agreement, Public Service is responsible for the completion of all remediation of all areas of concern. So this actually is the last parcel to be developed by the applicant and its related companies along this area of Jersey Avenue. You can see some of the parcels shown on the aerial Exhibit A2, which shows 986 Jersey Avenue, shows 780, the applicant tonight, and also a portion of the adjoining 760 Occidental Ice Melter Site. So that concludes what I have to say about the application as an overview. And if the board has any questions, I'll be willing to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Paulus. The board wishes to direct any questions to Mr. Paulus at this time?
It sounds like there are no questions at this time. You can proceed, Mr. Kelso. Thank you, Mr. Paulus.
Alright, thank you, Bob, and thank you, Mr. Crum. At this time, I would call Mr. Les Walker for testimony.
Bob, can you give me one second? I mean, Tom, sorry. I believe that Ms. Lopez has made her way back into the meeting. Ms. Lopez, are you there? Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Okay. Marvin, should note that she has returned to the meeting?
Ms. Lopez, this is Marvin Itzel, the board attorney. You were able to hear all of Mr. Paulus's testimony, is that correct?
Yes, I was on the phone. I'm sorry, I had technical issues trying to log online, but I was on the phone.
And you don't have any conflict with hearing this application, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let me just, Dan, apologize for the inconvenience. Tom, you have the floor again.
Thank you. At this time, again, I would call Mr. Les Walker for testimony, and to be sworn.
Mr. Walker, can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Leslie Walker, W-A-L-K-E-R.
Mr. Walker, do you swear from tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Alright, Mr. Walker, would you like me to share my screen with the pieces of this application in case you want to reference anything?
If you could put up the colorized site plan, which I believe is Exhibit A1?
Give me one second. Share. Screen, Exhibit A1. Colorize, colorize.
There we go.
There you go.
Alright.
Okay, so this is basically...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Les. You are a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
I am, Tom.
And could you give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Sure.
So, we know Mr. Walker well. I think he was just sworn in last meeting, so unless something's changed, we accept your credentials. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Walker, then, I would ask you to provide a general overview of the engineering aspects of the site plan, and if you could identify the location of the setback variances as part of your testimony. And aside from that, I'll just allow you to proceed with the presentation.
Wonderful.
Just one second. Mr. Dominguez, the screen you're sharing is no longer the site plan. Great, thank you. Perfect.
Okay, good evening, everybody. This is basically a colorized version of the site plan with the landscaping shown and some of the underlying utilities, just for discussion purposes. The site is located, as described prior, along Jersey Avenue. The front portion of the site is a decommissioned and now abandoned and cleaned up PSE&amp;G Substation. It's been returned to just a gravel lot. The remainder of the parcel is an open field at this point. It was created as part of the subdivision and the reconstruction and renovation of 760 Jersey Avenue. On the, we'll call it, planned right would be, on the east side is Conrail and Amtrak New Jersey Transit Train Rail in the back. The proposed building sits towards, back towards the rail in the rear of the site. In front of the building would be the five loading, tractor-trailer loading spaces and a drive-in ramp, along with 10 passenger vehicle, employee vehicle parking spaces, one of those being handicap accessible. Six are required. The driveway to the site crosses out through the former PSE&amp;G Substation parcel, which is identified as Lot 2 on the map. All utilities for the project are available within the site frontage and adequate to serve the proposed building. The 39,000 square foot building includes a 900 square foot office, which is located in the, from the street, it'd be the front left corner of the building, with an accessible route designed to that part of the building. Within the, in front of the loading spaces is a large, open paved area, which is necessary for the trucks entering the site to be able to turn around and back into the loading spaces, and as well as a small refuse area at the bottom of the plan. Landscaping, screening, although the adjacent uses are also in industrial and light industrial and commercial in nature, as requested by the board planner, landscape screening is provided on both sides of the parking and loading areas to the adjacent properties. Stormwater management is handled by means of an underground detention basin. These are becoming more and more popular as the technology advances. Basically, pipes that are in rows underground that provide the necessary storage to hold back runoff that's generated from the site and release it at a slower rate. There is a water quality unit on the upstream end of the underground basin, which provides 50% water quality enhancement that's required for all underground detention basins, to, basically to protect them from getting clogged up with sand or debris, leaves, garbage. That 50% device is a filter that'll screen most of that. The stormwater then outlets into the existing system on the mother lot, 760 next door, which has a large, open detention basin and ample capacity to, in the pipe system, to accept the piped water from our underground detention basin. The total stormwater design overall will meet the reductions required for the smaller site, and it'll actually help the 760 existing detention to function slightly better than it does now. Runoff to all points, including Jersey Avenue, have been reduced as required in the proposed condition. As described by Mr. Paulus, the improvements along Jersey Avenue are already in place. They were constructed as part of the overall development of 750, 760, and 986 Jersey Avenue, which are on the north and south of this parcel. And and no further action from NJDOT is required. The site was, the traffic generated by this small warehouse use was anticipated in the traffic reports previously completed by Dolan and Dean and Frank Miskovich for the overall development of all of these parcels together. There is no required application to the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission on this parcel, because it was, again, part of the overall design and what was anticipated for all of these properties together, and all of the required stormwater and stream buffering and all of those sorts of easements are already in place. Lighting for the site will be, parse a couple of fixtures on the front of the building, and then a few pole-mounted fixtures, all LED, efficient lighting. Freehold Soil Conservation Approval Plan Certification is already in place. County approval, conditional county approval has also been granted. The proposed variances, you can see on the plan that at the top of the building plan view and the bottom of the plan, it's slender pieces of the property. So that's where the side yard variances are, five feet at the bottom of the plan, and 15 feet and change with the two side yards combined. And I believe the lot width is 175 feet, but that's an existing condition. I believe that I've covered everything, unless there's any questions.
One second, so I'll unmute all the members of the board in case anyone has any questions. Make sure that opportunity speaks.
Bob Paulus? Can you hear me, Dan Dominguez?
Dan.
Thank you.
Les, I think the city engineer is to testify regarding the existing 30-inch RCP and how we're going to reroute that around the building and what we're doing with the pipe that's going to be abandoned. Can you touch on that?
abandoned. Can you touch on that?
Yes, certainly. There, there's an existing 30-inch pipe that runs from back at the, the rail behind the site and runs actually under what will be the, the footprint of the new, new building and then continues across 9, 986 Jersey Avenue. Where the pipe crosses under our building, we are proposing to install a new pipe that will intercept the, the existing pipe and route that around the building so that the, the pipe itself, the, the flowing pipe will not be under the, the, the building. The abandoned pipe will be removed where necessary for the, the construction of the foundation where necessary. And the rest of the, the pipe will be filled and abandoned in place. And I, and we've discussed that with the architect and he can confirm, but it's acceptable to leave it under the slab of the building.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walker. I don't know if the board wishes to direct any questions to Mr. Walker.
Yeah, John, I have one question for Mr. Walker. Could you just clarify from my application whether the proposed stormwater management system is going to comply with the recently approved green initiative that has modified some of those requirements? If you could just speak to that for a minute, I'd appreciate it.
It, it will, it will meet all requirements, all, all of New Jersey and, and federal stormwater requirements.
Thank you.
Bob Kartika, can you hear me?
Yes, Bob.
I just had a question about the traffic impact reports. I know that you mentioned those. I saw that those were relevant to different lots within the same block. One was dated 2014, it was relevant to Lot 6, and the other one was relevant to Lot 3.06. I didn't read these as inclusive of this property, but that seemed to be what you had indicated in your statement. Is that the case? Is, is, do these previous studies, are they inclusive of this lot or just considered to be relevant to this particular proposal?
They are, they're inclusive of, of what is going on right now for this property. If you recall, before 760 Jersey Avenue was, was redeveloped, that building was over 300,000 square feet. So, and, and that was a, a similar use. So, that 300 and some thousand square feet building was reduced to only 100 and, 100,000 and change, 120,000. I'm not sure of the exact number, but it was reduced significantly. And the three buildings together, 750, 760, 780 Jersey Avenue, all, all took combined are less square foot than that original building was. You can see that this, this building's only 39,000 square feet. There's only five loading docks on the front of the building, so it's, it's a, it's a very minor generator for traffic. It's, it's going to be one of the, one of the lighter uses along this stretch.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. That, that helps. One other question. What is the, what's the fate of this electrical substation once it's vacated? Is that going to be subject to a, another proposed development?
I'll, I'll address that. The substation is completely removed right now. They no longer need it. They're building a new one in North Brunswick. All the facilities have been taken out. The, we acquired the property mainly, primarily for the access point and be, and because we surround the property. So, right now, we've achieved what we need to have frontage onto Jersey Avenue, a curb cut onto Jersey Avenue, and the excess lands, we're going to value and look at how this property gets leased out and who, who needs it. If they need additional parking, trailer parking, car parking, we have ample lands at this point. And of course, anything that we further developed on that property and additional parking, we have to return back to the board.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Walker? I assume Dan hearing none. I should move on to my next witness.
Actually, Mr. Chair, this is Charlie Carley. Just one quick note. Mr. Walker talked about the 30-inch pipe that they anticipate will remain under the building. As long as we all recognize that's subject to the approval of the, of the construction official.
Yeah, I, I'll address that. Of course, that's, that's correct. And also, we reviewed this in detail with the city engineering, city engineer, Mr. Burke, and, you know, we have to obtain all of the approvals going forward in, in accordance with your report to meet with the city officials and the building department, et cetera. So, we will comply with that.
Okay.
This is, I'm sorry. This is Arvin Itel. Who was that that just spoke?
That was Bob Paulus. I'm on video right.
You're not on video.
I'm not. Hold on a second.
Any people could identify yourself prior to answering the question?
Yes, this is Bob Paulus, who just replied to Mr. Carley regarding the 30-inch pipe and the requirement to seek the approval of the building department subcode official. Is that, is that it, Arvin?
Make sure that the record was clear. Thank you.
I thank you. If there are no other questions for Mr. Walker, I would call Mr. James DeBarbieri for testimony. I know he's on, but you're gonna have to.
Yes, I am.
Do you have? DeBarbieri, can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Yes. James DeBarbieri, that's D-E-B-A-R-B-I-P-R-I.
Mr. Barbieri, do you swear or affirm tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth? I don't know why I stopped. Hold on. All right. Mr. DeBarbieri, you are a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
And in that capacity, you are familiar with the application before the board this evening for the development of the 39,500 square foot warehouse? If you could then, please give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Certainly. I received my Bachelor of Architecture degree from the University of Notre Dame. I've been licensed in New Jersey since 1979. I'm also licensed in 10 other states, including the surrounding states of New York, Connecticut, Pennsylvania, Delaware. A member of the American Institute of Architects and New Jersey Society of Architects. And I appeared before many planning boards and boards of adjustments. I appeared before this board for the buildings, 750 Jersey Avenue and 760 Jersey Avenue.
Thank you very much. Your credentials are accepted.
All right, thank you. Mr. DeBarbieri, if you could then, please, I'll just allow you to make a presentation with respect to the, the building development and the architectural detail associated with the building and layout and so forth?
Certainly. Is it possible to bring up the exhibit that we submitted? Well, actually, it's my plan, drawing A1. It's, it's the plan with my title block on it. It would have been with the original application.
All right. All right. So, do you remember what it was called?
Yes, it was the overall building plan and exterior elevations. The drawing number was A1.
Dan, I, I see one called architectural.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm. Here we go. Overall building plan.
Okay. Thank you. And this is the, the one sheet we submitted for this application. I wanted to start at the bottom of the sheet, just with our key floor plan. The area of the building has been explained and the size of the office at 900 square feet has been explained. I did want to go through the, the reason the building is configured the way it is. The footprint dimensions are 250 feet deep. That's depth going from Jersey Avenue toward the railroad and it's 158 feet wide. And the width of this building was developed to work with a structural column base that we found to be most efficient in the, the several buildings, warehouse buildings we've designed in, in this area. We found that 52 to 50-foot wide bay is, works most efficiently with the aisles and the racking, and that's what we use to develop the width of this building. In this case, we're using a 52-foot bay. That plan, just to orient you, it's the same as the previous exhibit. By that, I mean Jersey Avenue is to the left and the railroad is to the right of that plan. As was mentioned, the, the office area, the 900 square foot office area here is located directly at the end of the driveway that comes in, and we wanted to locate it there so it's visible, not only from Jersey Avenue, but from customers or truckers that come into this building. We also envisioned that the sign for the building would be over this entrance and it would be easily identified. Just want to mention about refuse and trash. There's usually questions regarding that. And, you know, as Mr. Paulus explained, this is, and will be a warehouse operation. Products come in and in bulk and they're held and redistributed. So, really, the only trash that gets generated is, is cardboard, plastic, and the cardboard is typically held inside the building and it's recycled. And as far as the rest of the building, we have a small 900 square foot office that will generate very minimal trash. The exterior elevations of the building are shown in, in the four elevations that are shown on the sheet. The front elevation is in the middle of the sheet toward the left. It shows you there the, the five loading doors. It shows you the drive-in door and the location of the office entrance, which is toward the north side with two windows and glass entrance doors. We also have provisions, if needed, for the possibility of two more loading doors between the drive-in door and the last loading door. This building is designed with precast concrete exterior walls. The building is totally non-combustible. It's got a steel frame and a metal roof deck. And as far as safety is concerned, it's, it's very safe, especially because of the upgraded early suppression, fast response sprinkler system where, which we are providing. So, in that sense, we consider this a very safe building. The other of elevations up above the one I just spoke of is the north elevation that's facing the occidental building. And the only difference there, we're using the same precast panels all the way around. We have added some clear story lighting to bring light into the building. The other two elevations face south and toward the railroad, and they are precast concrete panels. And what we want to do with this building is tie it into both the occidental building plus 750, which is under construction. We plan to use similar design for all to, to provide this overall development with an architectural aesthetic to tie the three buildings in. And I believe, Tom, that is the extent of my testimony. And if there's any question, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Um, sharing and make sure that if anyone from the board.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Danny. If I might, I had another question. I, I forgot to unmute myself. Jim, let me just ask a question. With regard to the placement of the building in relationship to the setbacks that were created, could you comment on that?
Yeah. The width of the building, we generated from our efficient bay that we've used in other buildings. And as far as the setback from the property lines, because of this precast building, we will be in complete compliance with the building code. These precast panels carry two to three hour rating and will be very safe in that regard.
Just looking at the, the site plan, do you have a sense of how far away the building, the ends of the building are to the adjacent property buildings?
Well, the, the occidental building is a good distance away. I don't have, you know, an idea how many feet it's, it's, I believe hundreds of feet, probably, Les, Walker may be able to explain better. Also, the 986 building with the recycling building is also a good distance away from this building. So, we don't see any issue with any buildings being right on top of each other.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeBarbieri. That's all I had for Dan.
Tom, I'm sorry. I, I wanted to mention one other thing. The building clear height in here is going to be 36 foot clear. And this is in conformance with the latest and most up-to-date warehouse that are being done in New Jersey. They are doing this to maximize the cube of a building and it's the Amazons and, and those companies of the world are requiring this for building a state-of-the-art building like this.
All right, thank you, Jim. The board has any questions for Mr. DeBarbieri? If not, I'd like to proceed with my last witness.
Yeah, please proceed. Thank you.
At this time, I would call Ms. Kate Keller for testimony.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Nice to see you there. So, Dan, would you spell your last name for the record?
Sure. My name is Kate Keller. Last name is K.E.L.L.E.R.
Ms. Keller, do you swear or affirm tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Floor is yours, Ms. Keller.
Thank you. Ms. Keller, you are a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, I am. I'm in, excuse me. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I talk too fast. In that capacity, you had an opportunity to review the variances that are being requested of the board this evening in relationship to the application for.
Yes, I have.
Could you give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience? I know you were accepted at the last meeting for testimony.
I was, I was. Just, just very briefly. I'm Associate Principal at Phillips Price Greigle Laney Hughes, based in Hoboken, New Jersey. I have been a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey since 2014. And prior to that, I've worked as a professional planner for about planner for about 10 years.
Thank you, Ms. Keller, your credentials are accepted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
If you could, Ms. Keller, then I'm going to ask you to do your zoning and planning analysis, leading up to your opinion with respect to the land use support for the variances that are being requested, and I'll allow you to proceed without me asking you specific questions.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Kelso. So as you've heard from our previous witnesses, we are requesting technically three variances, all of which are related to sideyard setback to permit the construction of a new warehouse and distribution facility on the subject property. As we've also noted, there is an existing variance condition on the property that was previously approved as part of a subdivision application with regards to the lot width, where 200 feet is required, and 175.67 feet is existing and proposed. So as part of the development of the new 39,500-square-foot warehouse facility, we are seeking three variances, again, all of which are related to sideyard setback, which is, we are seeking relief to allow a five-foot sideyard setback on the south side of the building, a 10.34 sideyard setback on the north side of the building, where 25 feet is required for each, and then a total sideyard setback combined of 15.34 feet, where 50 feet is required. As our other witnesses have covered the design of the site and the proposed architectural features of the building and its functional use, I think I'll just get right into the variance release testimony, which I believe that this is a clear example of a situation where the benefits of granting the variance outweigh the detriments for the C2 flexible C criteria. This property is adjacent to similar developments with similar uses, and all of these, not all, but many of the buildings in the vicinity have all been designed and arranged to ensure the compatibility between the site. As you've heard, there's going to be architectural compatibility, all the uses are very similar. And so, there's, and so as I said, this was created as part of an overall site plan and subdivision. There is the existing variance condition related to the lot line, which creates one bit of a challenge for compliance site design. However, we believe that the benefits of greater compatibility with the adjacent lot lines, including Lot 2 to the front, will outweigh that detriment. Further, as you just heard from Mr. DiBarbieri, the width of the building, which, you know, really creates the variance condition, is necessitated by the ability to function safely and efficiently as its intended use, which, once again, is a permitted use in the zone. The structural column bays needed for the efficiency of warehousing and racking will be 52 feet, and so in order to allow a sufficient number of aisles, that's the, basically, the building is going to extend a little further, which will increase the variance condition. With regards to site suitability of the property, the proposed building meets all of the other bulk requirements besides the setbacks, which in my opinion indicates that the building has been designed appropriately for the site. And in order to mitigate the potential negative attributes of the sideyard setback, which could include, you know, visual impact, but again, this is a property in an industrial zone, but in accordance with the letter from your planner, Mr. Bignell, we've added additional landscaping throughout the property, including street trees along Jersey Avenue, decorative stone around the perimeter, and evergreen and shade tree buffering. And so, given excuse me, given the existing conditions in the site and the surrounding area, I believe that this proposal promotes Purpose A of zoning, which is to guide municipal action in a manner that will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. As you've heard, this site has been designed for very safe operation of an industrial property, and that brings me to the second purpose, which is Purpose G, which is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including industrial uses. And this is a, this is development of an industrial property in an industrial area. Just briefly to touch on the negative criteria, I do not, in my opinion, there will not be any substantial detriment to the public good, given the surrounding uses in the site design, where Occidental's nearest building is, this was just brought up, but it's, I believe it's about 700 feet away from the lot line, and otherwise, the area somewhat functions as a planned industrial development, which will mitigate the impacts of a reduced setback back from a planning perspective. And for that case, because this is a relatively, you know, this is an industrial area that's been designed in this fashion, I think that the variances are unique to this property and will not interfere with the goals of the I2 zone or any impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. So in conclusion, I believe the application satisfies both the positive and negative criteria under the MLUL for the granting of a C variance. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. I have no further questions for Ms. Keller.
I don't think we have any. Thank you, Ms. Keller.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, that does complete our presentation. I would like to, on the record, just point out something that may create some confusion. The applicant that originally submitted the application is identified as 780 Jersey Avenue LLC. The applicant is actually now known as 760 New Brunswick Urban Renewal LLC, and it is the same entity, the same principles. It was just a name change that was accomplished subsequent to the submission of the 780 Jersey Avenue application. And as with many developers, they like to confuse you with using addresses and then use the same entities for different addresses. Sorry, but that's what creates the confusion. But the applicant is now known as 760 New Brunswick Urban Renewal LLC, and is the successor to 780 LLC. That's all I have, members of the board, then. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, and I do believe, Mr. Kelso, that it's reflected correctly on the agenda, at least the version that I am working off of, and I appreciate that note for everyone involved in the application and the public. Are there any final questions for the board and the board members before we turn this over to public comment? Okay, very good. Mr. Dominguez, do you want to open up the public comment portion?
Certainly, just give me one second, make sure all of the board members are adequately muted before I go into and, at this time, we are preparing to open, let me just, okay, I'm unmuted, all right. This time, we are preparing to open the meeting to general, sorry, to public comment on this application for five minutes per person, in order to assure that the planning board can hear from the interested public, and that the public can hear public comments. I will organize the speakers in order by last name. In order, in a moment, I will unmute the public call, and at that time, I will ask those with the last name, I'll do it in chunks this time, so I'll go from A through K, L through P, and then Q through Z. Upon the completion of asking for all last names, I will ask one more time for anyone who may want to be placed on this list of speakers, who will then move through the list of speakers by calling the person by name and permitting them five minutes to speak. Once we complete the list, we will once again check if anyone else would like to comment. After asking three times, I will close the public comment portion. Please be mindful that your voice is being telephonically transmitted, and speak slowly and clearly for the benefit of all. I will ask that you please remain silent when I initially unmute the phones so that we can all hear each other and then begin the speaker registration process. Okay, so the phones are now unmuted, and I will ask that any member of the public with a last name from A through K would like to add their names to initial list of speakers to state their last name.
Cradaville.
All right, Mr. Cradaville, noted. And L through P, anyone with the last names, with the last name between the letters of L and P? Anyone with a last name between Q and Z? So once again, if there's anyone on the call who did not make it onto this initial list of speakers who would like to make their, add their name to the list, please state your name, and I'll add you to the list. Anyone? Seeing none. We have one speaker, Mr. Charles Cradaville. I'm gonna put the timer machine going, and I'll let you know. All right, Mr. Cradaville, please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Charles Cradaville, K.R.A.T.O.V.I.L.
All right, Mr. Cradaville, do you swear from tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, Mr. Cradaville, your time starts now, and we're going to implement, just before I start your clock, we're going to implement now, in the interest of fairness here, a one-minute warning, so that we're not just sort of cutting you off at the end of your five minutes. I'll let you know after four minutes have elapsed that you have a minute remaining, so that you can more naturally wind down. So your time begins now, Mr. Cradaville.
Okay, well, on the topic of time limits, I must insist on cross-examining some of the witnesses, and, you know, depending on how that goes, it may or may not fit in five minutes, but I'll go as quickly as possible. I'd like to question Mr. Paulus about his testimony.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Hello, sir. Yes, I can. You mentioned in your remarks something to the effect of real estate taxes that would be, you know, reaped by the city, but isn't it true, sir, that this property has already been approved for a long-term tax exemption, and therefore there would be no real estate taxes paid on the improvements to the property?
No, that's incorrect.
There's no tax exemption for this property?
No, that's correct. For this lot, there is none, and for the adjoining lot, there is none.
Okay, I guess this is part of the confusion from the 760, 780 situation, so.
Mr. Cradaville, there's no confusion. 760 New Brunswick Urban Renewal own all three lots. And so, 750 is one, 760 is one, and this is the next lot, and then the other property next door is 986 Jersey Avenue. None of those have pilot programs.
Okay, so not 750, not 760, not 780, and not 986?
750 is approved for a pilot, 760, which is, which is the largest building in the mother lot, is not approved for a pilot, 780 has no pilot at this time, 986, which is built and occupied, but there is no pilot.
Thank you for clarifying, I truly appreciate it. And so, the particular property that we're dealing with today, it's, you have no intention of applying for a long-term tax exemption for that. You intend to pay traditional property taxes on it.
I didn't say that. At this time, we have not planned to make an application, we have not made an application for a pilot.
Mr. Kelso, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I'm not sure how this would be relevant to the application itself. This board cannot consider whether there is or is not a tax in place. It can only consider the merits of the application.
Arvin, I didn't have an objection to him answering it, because I know he was prepared to answer the question, but whether or not he's applying for a pilot in the future on this property is not relevant. But he's answered the question, he's not made that decision.
Okay, well, thank you for answering. I do, I do appreciate it, and the only reason I asked is because it was part of the testimony. So the other thing I wanted to ask about the testimony is the RAO. I didn't quite hear, who was the LSRP that was responsible for the site?
It's Wahid Khan, who is also, works with Rue Environmental Firm, and he's been the LSRP for the overall site from the inception of the remediation program for all three lots.
Gotcha. And Mr. Khan is, he involved only in this project, or he, does he do other work with your businesses, sir?
He's involved in this project. We inherited him when we purchased the property, and we determined that he would be the best to keep continuity, so we've kept him on.
Gotcha. And so, as of that date of the RAO, it's your understanding that the entire site has been cleaned up from the original lots?
The entire site for soils, remediation, and a multitude of AOC have been complied with, cleaned up, as you say. That report is on file, and that's what Mr. Khan sets forth in his report, and issued it to the NJDEP by way of copy.
Okay, well, thank you, sir, for answering my questions, and wish you all the best.
Thank you.
That's all I have, board.
Thank you, Charles.
All right, if there's any other members of the public who did not get a chance to speak and do their public comment and would like to be added to the list, please state your name. We'll get you on the list. Got any comments? Anyone? Seeing none. Public comment period on this here, on this application is closed. Mr. Dominguez, this is Mr. Kelso. We will submit to the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Dominguez, Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is Arvin, I'm the board attorney. It may be appropriate for the possible conditions that the professional staff have put together prior to any board discussion on the application.
Fine with me.
Yes, hello, this is Katie Pinello, Principal Planner for the City of New Brunswick. Should the board act favorably on this application, we recommend the following conditions of approval: Compliance with the terms of the DNR report dated July 13, 2020, and the City Engineer Report dated March 10, 2020, for the project; Payment of a site performance bond in an amount reviewed and approved by the City Engineer; Submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in an amount calculated pursuant to Title 1624-160; Payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles 1304 and 1308, if required; Issuance of a road opening permit from the City Engineer, if required; The applicant shall schedule pre-construction meeting with the City Engineering Department; Compliance with the terms of the Big Now Planning Report dated July 8, 2020, for the above projects; Planning review escrow funded for all anticipated post-approval reviews; Payment of all outstanding taxes and water sewer fees; Middlesex County Planning Board approval or waiver; DNR Canal Commission approval or waiver; Freehold Soil Conservation District approval or waiver; Any other agency approval or waiver as required; Submission of all engineering site plans; See to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos; Submission of architectural plans comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos; All utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense; All onsite utilities to be constructed underground; Temporary encroachments in the public right-of-way shall require City Council approval; Construction staging shall be done onsite unless an encroachment allowing to the public right-of-way is approved by the City Council; Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris; The applicant shall cause these streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works; Tracking patch will be installed at all construction exits; Replacement of damaged streets, curb, and sidewalks is for the direction of the City Engineer; And the following variances have been requested: A single sideyard setback, a combined sideyard setback, there's an existing condition for lot width, and we have design waivers for, I believe it was foundation plantings, and the height of loading area screening plantings, and that's all.
Thank you, Katie. I'm sorry.
No, I'm just making every- No, I'm just meeting everybody from the Board to make sure that if they want to comment, that they may. All right, everyone's unmuted. Yeah, everyone's unmuted now.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Any Board further comments or discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Thank you, Chris.
John.
John, I'm sorry. Thank you, John.
I'll second it, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, um, let me just check the roll to make sure I know who's here. All right. Yelitchevko.
Yes.
Dale Vickers.
Yes.
I don't know if Suzanne ever made it back onto the call. Suzanne, are you there? Guess not. Kristela Tella.
Yes.
Diana Lopez.
Yes.
Yes.
John Petrolino.
Yes.
Jeff Crum.
Yes. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board members and staff.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. That was our only hearing for the night. I'm sorry, that was our only application for the night. We do have a hearing still on, there's a proposed amendment to Title 16, the Land Development Code, and the Planning Board is going to review a proposed amendment to the City's Land Development Code related to site plan fees. Dan, do you want to lead us through this discussion?
Sure, if Mr. Itol wouldn't mind swearing me in.
Mr. Dominguez, raise your right hand, please.
Yes, sir.
You swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give to this board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Mr. Chairman, he has been sworn.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, members of the Board. Tonight before you, for review, is an amendment to our Title 16 Land Development Code specifically regarding site plan fees. The three pieces of the amendment are as follows. You've all gotten my memo dated September 25, 2020, I hope. Had an opportunity to look it over. But in summation, for minor site plans and major site plans, there would be a system of crediting people who have submitted their zoning permits, which, for whatever reason, we've rejected many times because, you know, it's a project or application that cannot be approved administratively, requires board approval even if it has no variances or anything of that nature, but still requires site plan approval, that it's not site plan exempt. So, in these cases, I'd like to, if they were to produce the applications in a timely manner, in this case, 60 days for minor site plan is a lower threshold for that, or 120 days for major site plans, that we credit the fee of the zoning permit against their application fees. For minor site plan, it's a sort of a bigger deal. You're talking fees of probably about $100 to $150. That would be credited against a $500 minor site plan fee. Major site plans can, you know, balloon into, deep into the five figures, so it's less of a benefit, but I still think a fair thing to do. And I think that particularly in the minor site plans, that it would encourage people to not feel as if the city is trying to nickel and dime them, and so that we're, people are encouraged to actually apply for their by right applications rather than not do them, or worse, do them without getting the appropriate approvals. So, that's where those amendments would go. And the final one would be that currently, we don't, as a city, charge for, when we do a site plan fee calculation, the land area is not a factor in the fee. It's the building development, but as you may know, that the size of a lot significantly impact the amount of work associated with the review of a project. And so, I've put together what I believe is a very reasonable fee schedule for land that would, even if you had a 1 million square foot parcel, that you would be looking at only an additional $10,400 in additional site plan fees. So, I think that, given the scale of 1 million square feet, which is, I think about, off the top of my head, it's about 23 acres, so a pretty massive site, I think that ultimately, it's probably a fair fee to charge for something that we're not charging at all for. And that's sort of the general gist of these applications. So, if anyone has, I mean, of these amendments, if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask.
Dan, can you hear me?
Is that Bob?
It is, yeah.
Yes.
Just, I think it's minor, but I think you got a couple of typos or errors in here I just want to point out, if I got that right. Under major site plan, you indicate credit the zoning permit fee if submitted for a minor site plan with 120 days. Shouldn't that be major?
That would be major, yep.
And underneath the fee schedule, you have million-square-foot loot in a lot.
Thank you, Bob.
That's all.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob. Dan, this is Jeff. One, these fees and changes seem both appropriate and fair, and I thank you for, one, doing this work, and, two, considering fairness, particularly for smaller applicants who could find fees to be either overwhelming or too onerous. My only question is, has there been any discussion with the business administrator in terms of, or maybe you even know yourself, how this impacts the overall city budget? Is there any negative or positive repercussions for making a change in the middle of a fiscal year like this?
I would imagine that. Well, one, I would, when we do the amendment, I would have it slotted to start on January 1. So, it's, and our year runs on a calendar year budget. So, that's hopefully moot. But additionally, I honestly think that it would hopefully net out more revenue by encouraging people to actually go forth and do their minor site plans, whereas we typically do, I don't know, two or three a year, but we probably kick back 10, 20 applications a year that need to do a minor site plan, and then they just don't ever reply. Hopefully, we're able to catch some of those, you know, we catch a couple of them, it already sort of pays for itself, and it encourages well-reviewed projects, and it allows us to help correct any problems in relatively minor projects, but that allows us to fix what otherwise could be problematic.
Great, thank you. Very helpful.
Hey, Dan, John Petrolino here. So, is it your opinion that these rejected site plans that are never then resubmitted, do you have any anecdotal evidence to suggest that it is the fee that is preventing folks from resubmitting these? Are you hearing this, or is this...
Yeah, John, I have, over the course of the last year and a half, I have had a few conversations where people sort of feel like the city might be trying to sort of double-dip on them, per se, and feel sort of dejected and choose not to pursue the minor site plan opportunity. With the major site plans, it's a lot less likely because those are, you know, significant projects, right? So, this credit, like I said, is negligible, but at the same time, probably not reasonable to credit the minor site plans and not the majors. But, yeah, no, I have heard from folks anecdotally who've sort of tabled projects altogether just because they felt kind of, I guess, slighted from the process for having to pay again. I remember, I won't say who, which site, but there was a restaurant in town that wanted to set up a, I think it was a pergola last year, which would be technically a structure, and it was over the size of what would be required for minor site plans, so they were just over the threshold, and then they just never did it. They wanted to do a pergola for having people sit down outside underneath it and pretty it up, and they just, you know, they kind of got upset at the process and just never did it. And I think that that's ultimately, I mean, it's a loss for them, but I think it's a loss for the city that those folks chose not to pursue those improvements to their site. And I'd like to hopefully encourage some of those people to actually enter the process appropriately and actually make those improvements.
Yeah, fair enough. So, from what I'm hearing, am I correct in understanding that when people do not refile, that they are essentially abandoning the project? That's your understanding versus moving forward without obtaining the appropriate approvals outside of the minor site plan review?
Yeah, I would say that not moving, abandoning the project would probably be, I guess, the most, the best-case scenario if they didn't proceed. A lot of them probably, and I've seen a few places who've done it, they just go ahead and build it, and then we have to tell them, hey, well, congratulations, now you have to tear down this whole thing that you built because you didn't go through the process. So, that's even worse, and I hate to do that. I would like to have people go through the process appropriately and just approve it with the necessary conditions and any corrections that we need to do, and just do it simply.
Yeah. No, fair enough. I mean, I think if somebody submits, it shows that they understand the process, and then if they build, they do certainly do so at risk because they understand the process, they choose not to go forward with it. So, you know, to me, that suggests potential bad faith. But, that's not the question before us, so I appreciate your efforts, and I think that showing that we, as a city, want to be fair to people, minor and major, reflects well in the organization. I certainly support the effort, so thank you for the time.
Thank you, John. Anyone else from the Board with any comments?
Dan, hearing none, I think you can move to take a vote or ask for a motion. Does anybody wish?
We should open it to public comment, Chair, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yep, sorry about that.
Just, in case, I only see that there's only a couple of people from the public, so I'm going to be, I guess, less formal here. But if there's any member of the public would like to speak on this, please announce yourself, and we'll put you on the list of speakers, and you'll have your five minutes to comment on these amendments. Anyone at all? Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't feel comfortable myself asking for the vote or a motion, so...
Understood. I'm sorry, who is that?
Petrolino, I'll make the motion to approve.
Great. Thank you, John. Do we have a second?
Bob Cardica, a second.
Bob Cardica?
All right, Bob Cardica. All right, so Yelitchevko?
Yes.
Dale Vickers?
Yes.
Kristela Tella?
Yes.
Diana Lopez?
Yes.
Bob Cardica?
Yes.
John Petrolino?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody. Now, we're going to move back to the item in the agenda which we deferred to move, and this was a discussion of the board rules regarding public comment and interaction. Mr. Itol, would this be you, or do we want to hand that back to Dan?
Mr. Chairman, I can start that off. As the Board members have had some opportunity now to review the proposed rules for the conduct of the Planning Board meetings, just so the Board members are familiar with these, they can certainly make some changes. These are taken from the suggested model rules for planning boards. So, there are some minor modifications that have been made, only because there were positions, for instance, that some boards in the model rules propose for positions that don't exist with our specific board, so there have been modifications in that regard. But in terms of the model rules for the conduct of the meeting, there are very few changes from those suggested. If the Board members would like to make any changes or have any questions, I'm available for both noting those changes, but this is a collaborative effort of the Board in terms of how it wants to see the conduct of the meeting going forward.
Bob Cardica, just a question. I looked at this some time ago, and I was, the revisions were not specifically highlighted in the document that I saw. I'm assuming that these changes in terms of conduct of the meetings are to, are specifically associated with discouraging use of obscenities and vulgar language and that sort of thing during meetings. That correct?
That's correct. There is a section here which addresses the use of coarse or abusive language, and that would be in Section 2, 2:2-3(c).
Right, I recall seeing that. And in addition to that, there are other changes just to eliminate some positions that don't exist?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other Board members have questions for Mr. Itol, or you have different thoughts, or maybe a different way you'd want to see this? Please feel free From my perspective, these changes are definitely warranted and needed, and I think they are in keeping with what we hope to encourage. So, thank you for whoever drafted them, I appreciate it. Do we need, is there, do we need to take formal action on this?
You do.
Okay.
So, if the Board members are satisfied with the verbiage in the model rules as have been proposed, then there would be a motion to adopt those on second and a roll call vote. The Board members do need to be aware that this is not written on stone tablets, so if there are modifications the Board members wish to make based on the ongoing needs of the Board, they can make those modifications at any meeting.
Great. That's helpful for now. Does anyone wish to make a motion to modify these rules?
I think we have to do public comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, once again, I'm going to open the meeting up for public comment, for anyone who wishes to speak on these Board rules that are proposed to be adopted. Is there any member of the public who would like to be placed in the initial list of speakers? Anyone at all?
Yes, Charlie Cradaville.
All right, Mr. Cradaville, you've been noted into the list. Is there anyone else from the public would like to be added to the list? Anyone at all? Seeing none. Mr. Cradaville, give me one second so I can get your timer You have the floor, Mr. Cradaville.
Yes, good evening, once again, members of the Board. Charles Cradaville, you know... You know me by now. Want to thank you for adopting, you know, some rules here that don't include a limit on the length of time that people can speak on an application, and I think that's important, that folks not be limited in their time for especially questioning witnesses. And so while I do see the right to object and to call witnesses is included in here, I don't see how any reasonable person would think that could be accomplished in five minutes. So I do want to just clarify that, you know, going forward, there's not going to be a time limitation, as had been the case historically for many years, if not decades, until March of this year, when for the first time, the board started trying to limit people's comments to five minutes. And I don't feel the need to belabor the point, but I do want to clarify that these rules don't include any kind of time limits on the public comments during hearings, right?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, yes, please.
The rules themselves generally go over the conduct, but the prerogative of the chair is to, is to run an orderly meeting, which includes the limitation of public comment periods. So this is something that is within the discretion of the board, and going forward, if the chair wanted to limit to five minutes, that would be appropriate.
Well, we'll have to agree to disagree on that one. I know that you, sir, and many others were involved in the Main Street hearings, and I know maybe they went on longer than some people would have liked, but I think that there was a lot of value in people getting to, you know, say their piece, ask questions, and ultimately, you know, raise enough concern that the project was ultimately defeated. So I do think that, you know, in, you know, in the interest of having a full and fair hearing, you know, projects should not be rushed through, and I'm glad that this doesn't include the time limits. That was the main comment on this. I will have some more comments later on in your meeting, but I will just draw attention. The only mention of time limitations here is actually 1, colon, 3, dash, 7, which is the, you know, no new matters after 10:00 PM, no new testimony after 10:30. And I think that's how it should be, and people should be able to speak at length. You're dealing with, you know, decisions that are going to last for many decades and affect people's, you know, people's homes and businesses for a long time in big ways, and I think that, you know, the least you can do is let people say their piece. So I hope that at your next meeting, which I understand is a special meeting, that you'll, you know, entertain comments, and the bulk of my questions in the next part of the meeting are going to be about how that's going to be conducted, so I'll follow up then. But from what I've seen in the rules, it seems like it's a good, a good set of rules, and so I hope that you'll adopt it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Dan, do you want to ask one more time, or can we?
If there's anyone else from the public who would like to comment on the board rules, feel free to add their two cents. Anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion to amend the board rules at this time?
Motion to amend?
Dale's second. Chris Delatella's second.
Dale, did you make the motion?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, Yulitza Checo?
Yes.
Dale Vickers?
Yes.
Chris Delatella?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes. Yes.
Bob Cardica?
Yes.
Tom Petrolino?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Now we're going to open up the meeting to any of, any other matters of interest to the public. This will be the final overall public comment section of tonight's meeting.
Right. All right. So at this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to general public comment for five minutes per person in order to assure that the planning board can hear from the interested public and that the public can hear public comments. I will organize the speakers in order by last name. In a moment, I will unmute the public call, and at that time, I will ask for anyone from the public who wishes to speak to provide me your last name, first name, and home address. I will confirm that the information is correct, and I will then move on to the next person alphabetically from A to Z. Upon the completion of asking for all last names from A to Z, I will ask one more time for anyone who may want to be placed in an initial list of speakers. We will then move through the list of speakers by calling the person by name and then permitting them five minutes to speak. Once we complete the list, we will once again check to see if anyone else would like to comment. After asking three times, I will then close the public comment portion. Please be mindful that your voice is being telephonically transmitted, speak slowly and clearly for the benefit of all. I will ask that you please remain silent when I initially unmute the phones so that we can all hear each other and begin the registration process. So the phones are now unmuted, and I will ask that any member of the public would like to comment, general public comment, to state their names, and I'll put them on the list of speakers.
Charlie Cradaville.
All right, Charlie. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to comment on this? Well, just general public comment. Anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Cradaville, getting the time. Where's yours?
Thank you, sir. So I'll be quick, I have some questions about the next meeting. I understand you have a special meeting. It's to have a hearing on the project at 165 Somerset Street, the one that's so controversial. And I wanted to ask, I guess, first of all, who is going to be chairing that meeting?
Mr. Chairman, this is Arvin Eital, the board attorney. This is the portion of the meeting which is for comments by the public.
So I don't, you know, I suppose the board doesn't have to answer the question. I, in the interest of trying to be efficient in my objections to the project, I was just going to try to get some basic questions out of the way, if counsel would allow. You know, I believe the chairman is going to be conflicted out for the hearing, and so I just wanted to ask who the chairperson is, since the rules that you just passed put so much importance on the chairperson and their authority.
Mr. Cradaville, we'll make sure that prior to the meeting, there's, you know, there's a clear order for who chairs the meeting. There's your chair, there's the vice chair. So if I am conflicted out, of course, I will run all my conflicts by Mr. Eital, like every board member does before every meeting, and I will accuse myself, and then the vice chair would step in and so forth, and we'll follow the order.
I guess, I do have to ask, is Mr. Eital conflicted out on that? Is he going to be representing the board in that matter?
Again, we will have proper counsel at the meeting. We'll make sure that anybody who has a conflict accuses themselves, just as we do every meeting. We'll continue to do that for the next application.
Okay. So I guess, as far as my objections to the application, I'll be putting something in writing to Mr. Dominguez, and I'll try to enumerate them, but I do, you know, obviously have concerns if there's conflicts of interest. I do have concerns if there's going to be time limits. I don't know if I was able to persuade you with my remarks earlier, or persuade whoever will be the chair ultimately with my remarks earlier, but I do think that the hearing should proceed without time limits. And my question as far as, you know, cross-examining witnesses and being able to do that, you know, that really can't be accomplished in five minutes, especially if there's four or more witnesses, you know. So what do I have to do to be able to fully exercise my right and not be time-limited? If I get an attorney to represent myself, then do I, you know, then am I going to be, is that attorney going to be able to ask all the questions that need to be asked without a five-minute time limit? Or is that something that, as a citizen, I can do that?
We'll be happy to take your comments under advisement. I think the board has worked very hard to give people more than adequate time to communicate their concerns, to receive answers, and then reply again. So that practice will continue. I don't think we have ever stopped anyone from talking. You know, we have to, this is a very different period of time, we're trying to conduct a meeting under unique circumstances, and there needs to be a little bit more order and structure during these challenging times, and we appreciate your patience during this time. But again, I don't think it's disrupted any communication or comment.
Okay. Thank you for that. And so I do, you know, yeah, obviously, I'm strongly opposed to the application, to the development, so I'm going to be exercising, you know, as much of my rights as possible. And I do want to understand, you know, I presume the hearing will be conducted just like the hearings have been conducted for a few months, and I want to thank the board, and probably Mr. Dominguez was somewhat responsible for getting the video going so that, you know, people, if they allow for their camera to be on, can be seen as these things are being conducted. I know sometimes I've seen applicants get the ability to, you know, come to City Hall and speak directly to at least some of the board members and professionals there, and they're, you know, they're obviously appearing on camera in City Hall. And I wanted to ask if that's going to be done next time, and if, to be fair, if the applicant is going to be able to be in City Hall, I would also like to be able to be there as an official objector. What would you say to that?
Mr. Eital, if you don't mind, I'll jump in here for a second. We, we're not doing that anymore, like, at all, for anyone. So as long as we're remote, everyone's, and that's just how we're going to go.
Okay, just two more items I wanted to ask about, the deadline to submit documents as a, you know, opposition objector. I think at the last meeting, it was, you know, mentioned that five days was the deadline, five days before the hearing. Did I hear correctly, or is it longer than that? Is it too late to submit documents today, for two weeks from today?
Are these documents that you're going to reference at the, at the meeting, that you'd want us to have up on the website?
Yeah, absolutely.
I would, I would recommend that you provide them to us no later than the Friday before the hearing. So that would be 19, the 16th, so, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Just email them to you, or?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that acceptable?
That's fine.
Terrific. And then finally, I did want to lodge an objection about the fact that the application's being allowed to move forward without the other half of it, basically, the parking garage that would be on the back end of this massive development. And I think they're, you know, required to have some 600-plus parking spaces, and what they're going to tell you is that you should approve their project, even though the parking component is not yet approved. And I believe they say it's been submitted in a separate application, is that correct? Has an application been received by the planning department for another piece of this?
This is Arvin Eital, the board attorney. I think we're sort of, we're delving into an area where it's an application, it's not currently before the board, that is going to be before the board at the next special meeting. So the board ought not to consider any comments made in objection prior to that application actually being heard. I think it would, it would work equally in terms of fairness, if someone appeared in favor of the application, decided that they would exalt the virtues of the application today, we would certainly admonish the board or advise the board that they ought to consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Eital. Just real quick, Mr. Cradaville, you have, you have a minute, just so you know, just a one-minute warning.
Okay, okay, back to the time limits. Okay, so I do want to just conclude by requesting that the other application, the application for the parking deck, if it is indeed on file with the city, that that be posted to the city website post haste so that folks can see it, since it is referenced in the application for the hospital project. So I do think that, you know, we should at least get to see it. If Mr. Dominguez would be so kind, maybe he could tell me if he's going to be able to post that, or if he's scheduled to post that sometime soon, or if I should file an OPAH, or if he, she can just send it to me via email.
No, I think we'll have it up probably sometime this week. I don't see an issue with that whatsoever.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, sir, and thank you, members of the board and professionals, for answering some of my questions.